Call the order, Woodland Park Planning Commission for Thursday, July thirteenth. Take a roll call, please.
Chair Hertzfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Lee Brown.
Here.
On this album.
Here.
George Jones.
Here.
Ken Kennedy.
Here.
Larry Larson.
Here.
And Sean Nielsen is absent.
He's trying to pledge allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So everyone's had the opportunity to review the minutes from June twenty ninth this year.
Comments?
Issues are moved to be approved as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Who seconded, please? Thank you.
Jones.
All right.
I.
Hi.
Post. Thank you. Tonight we have.
Just need to recuse myself from voting on me for minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Uh, tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings. Process will follow is we'll have presentation by staff. Mission will ask questions, clarifications, invite the applicant then to come forward, make any presentations or clarifications at that point. Then might have some further questions from commission and we will open the public hearing portion and invite anyone in the audience or online go forward with comments. Once that's concluded, we'll invite the candidate applicant to come forward and respond to those possibly some more questions from commission. Then debate the issue, uh, move to a motion and vote on the issue. So our first public hearing tonight is S U B twenty twenty-three dash oh four Pines at Tamarack P U D master plan preliminary plat extension. Presentation from staff.
CJ. Thank you, Chair. CJ Gates, I'm representing the city of Woodland Park Planning Department. So as you stated, this is a request for a two-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack Plan Unit Development Master Plan and a one-year extension of the preliminary plat. The subject property is located on the east side of Highway sixty-seven, north of the intersection of sixty-seven and Sourdough Road. Across the highway from Shining Mountain Golf Course. The subject property is zone plan unit development as seen on the right-hand side of the slide. Chapter seventeen point two zero point zero nine zero and eighteen point three zero point zero five zero outline the extension regulations for preliminary plats and P U D master plans. According to city codes, the preliminary plat can only be extended for one-year periods and P U D master plans can only be extended for two-year periods. On July eighteenth of twenty nineteen, the city council approved the Pines at Tamarack P U D final master plan and preliminary plat. The master plan consisted of two twenty-six single-family lots on the twenty-point-six-one acre lot. On May sixth of twenty twenty-one, city council approved a two-year extension of the Pines at Tamarack P U D master plan to July eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three. And a one-year extension of the preliminary plat to July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. On August twenty-fifth of twenty-two, the planning commission approved another one-year extension of the preliminary plat, so it would expire on July eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three along with the P U D master plan. On May fifteenth of this year, planning staff received a request from the applicant for a two-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack P U D master plan. And a one-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack preliminary plat. Construction of this project is still anticipated and no changes have been made to the original plans. Here on this slide is a snapshot of the approved master plan. Currently, the master plan consists of twenty-six dwelling units over twenty-point-six-one acres for a density of one-point-two-six dwelling units per acre. All units will be single-family residential and accessed off of a, uh, off of three newly created right-of-ways. The application met all noticing requirements and was referred to the parties listed here on the slide. Adjacent property owners within one hundred and fifty feet were also mailed a letter notifying them of the substantial, uh, I'm sorry, of the submittal of the application as well as all meeting dates, including the planning commission public hearing tonight. Staff has received no public comments regarding this extension proposal. Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District did comment that they were in favor of the application. And Core Electric Cooperative also submitted a comment to planning staff via email on June sixteenth stating the, that they do not approve of the extension and will require a fifteen-foot front lot utility easement. Courseful, uh, full comment was attached within the planning commission staff report. Staff would also like to point out that the approved preliminary plat already does consist of a fifteen-foot wide utility easement on all typical local residential road, roadways. Staff believes that it is reasonable to extend the preliminary plat for an additional year as well as the P U D master plan for two years. By code, a preliminary plat can only be extended for one year at a time while P U Ds can be extended for two years. Granting this extension would have the preliminary plat expire on July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the P U D master plan would expire on July eighteenth of two thousand twenty-five. Additionally, all conditions as originally approved will also be extended and would still be, be in effect and apply. Staff's recommendation is to move to recommend approval of the request by David Garrettson for a two-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack Plan Unit Development Master Plan. And a one-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack Preliminary Plat for Residential Development on twenty-point-one-six acre. On Lot Two, Block One, Day Spring Christian Fellowship in the Pines at Tamarack P U D Zone District. This concludes my presentation, commissioners, and please let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you, CJ. Any questions for staff at this time?
Yeah, CJ, I'm, I'm just curious, did you talk or reach out to, uh, Core on their disapproval?
Uh, we did not communicate with Core. We received the, uh, comment and then put it in your staff report. Um, and within that staff report, I also attached that snapshot from the approved, um, master plan that does have that easement in there.
Okay.
Um, so. And one, another thing to point out on that comment as well, this is an extension of an already approved.
Right.
Plan. Um, so if they were to develop this any further, you know, further permitting, uh, would have to happen with the city of Woodland Park Planning Department, which then would go out for an external referral again, uh, to Core, so.
Beyond specific to this project, could I be adding general comments on their? Crash of new comments on the fifteen-foot easement?
Uh, from developers or depends who you ask, so.
No, from, from Core.
Um, it's pretty standard that they're asking for fifteen feet now, uh, for their utilities and it's.
This was a change that we encountered, um, I think middle of last year where it was just, I mean, I think it was something you guys looked at where all of a sudden we had this, this comment out of the blue. Um, rather than putting those kind of utilities at the rear of the lot, uh, Core was asking for a fifteen-foot easement solely for their purposes, you know, at the front of the lots. So that was really quite a, a shift. And then there's been some other activity, um, because they were doing this, um, pretty, pretty holistically with all of the various entities that they serve. And so, um, they have started to back off of that position a little bit, but, um, obviously they're still willing to make that request. And you've seen in other applications where we've sorted things out with them a little bit in terms of road right-of-way widths and, and what that easement looks like. So, um, in terms of a firm policy or a firm agreement with them, we don't have that in place. Um, but you're likely going to see this keep showing up in this, the same way for, for a while, you know, from Core.
It is just seems to be quite unusual that we receive a recommendation of dial or a project.
Well, and it's interesting that evidently the, the easements were already there, so it makes me, it makes me wonder how much this was looked at when, um, it was routed to them. Um. Especially when what they're asking for is already shown on the plat.
Right.
So.
Can I, can I ask, is your, your interpretation of the statutes for the approval and extension? Um, do you believe the process is the same except for the time limit involved? And the reason I'm asking is, um, first Title eighteen goes through a process when there's a request. Extension requested, we'll have a public hearing and we'll make a recommendation to city council. For the preliminary plat just says someone will apply to this planning commission. Does that mean the planning commission is the sole decider and this doesn't need to go forward to city council or do you just decide that they're parallel and both should be treated the same way with additional process?
We have, um, we recognize this as two distinct things, um, so they are technically separate processes. Um, and with only one of what those needing to go to city council as it's clearly specified, um, the preliminary plat extension, we've interpreted that as being able, for the planning commission to be the deciding entity on that. Uh, but in this case, since it's going to city council, um, we're obviously going to let them know that this was, was part of what you guys have already looked at, so.
Okay, and we'll cover this in our, in the unified development code, getting the same timeframe, I trust. An item for, then for consideration.
Um, that definitely falls under our administrative issues.
Thank you.
So thank you for bringing that up.
Any other questions? It's time for staff.
Under, uh, staff findings on the staff report, we talk about, uh, excuse me, referrals and notifications, adjacent property owners with one hundred feet. Uh, have been mailed a letter notifying them.
Excuse me.
Was there ever a poster or a public hearing notice?
See, um, you're pretty quiet tonight, um.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
Thank you, and I got a good hearing.
Okay.
I'm, I, the, the first sentence of the referrals and notification section says adjacent property owners with one hundred and fifty feet were mailed a letter notifying them of the submittal. Were they notified of the, uh, the public hearing as well? And did we post the property or have the property, it's not stated in the staff report? And did we advertise in the, uh, the, uh, peak view courier?
Correct, so, um, the peak view courier was notified, uh, with this agenda. Um, within that letter that goes out to all neighboring residents within a hundred and fifty feet does outline the city, uh, the planning commission and city council hearings. Um, and, uh, no sign was erected on the site.
Okay, thank you.
And it would have been about two weeks ago when this was published in the newspaper.
Oh, okay.
It just wasn't noted in the staff report. It usually is.
All this time, I invite the applicant to come forward and give a presentation or comment.
We had a chat with him earlier today about everything that Dave handles that we dropped the ball on, so this will go on tomorrow's chat.
Good evening. My name is Jim Howke. I'm with Kinley Horn, uh, representing the, the owner on this property. Since he is out of town today and, uh, just a quick clarification. I think there's been a lot of turnover at Core. That's probably why we're getting some of these comments.
No.
But we were, we did have that conversation with them at time of the original submittal approval and we made those, uh, adjustments or the, those easements. It's noted on the plans, part of their request early on, so it's just something that's been coming. We were on the front end of that side early on, so I'm not sure why they come and come back. There's been, I know that they're on the. That's all I have. Uh, I think there's anything else that. I could add to that conversation, I guess, at this point.
Well, um. Obviously, projects stop proceeded as well as, as quickly as everybody's anticipated. If you give us, uh, a status of what's happening with the project, what's anticipated, I know it's been, um, posted as for sale for some time. And, uh, what, what are your expectations?
Uh, there, there are some efforts still to keep moving it forward. Um, he, uh, the client had, uh, had ran into a couple. Health and issues or health issues, I guess, so that, that's what originally triggered the for sale. Um, that is since then been resolved, I guess, could help in moving forward. Uh, so he's got some, uh, some buyers, uh, going on it and, and, um, there's been a lot of interest by individual. Other developers, but, uh, he's thinking he just wants to take it forward himself now, so.
Or he's anticipating developing it on his own, well, not on his own, but.
Yeah.
As the lead.
Do it forward, yes.
Is there a timeframe on when things may progress?
That's still a good question. I keep asking the same question. Um, I would say, you know, in the next. You know, six to eight months, we'll probably have a little more, uh, concrete plans in place. They can come back and talk to you, see what you care about, so.
I know, uh, as a commission, we've been a little bit. Concerned about projects that come back repeatedly, repeatedly for additional extensions without having, uh, much moving forward, so I'd like, you know. Some affirmation that this is going to be forward in the near future.
That's correct. Yep, so. And I'm sure is, as soon as we get some more updates, the staff will know as soon as possible and we'll get some things in place for it, though.
But you don't anticipate coming back and find less for their extensions?
I don't at this point, no. He seems, he seems to be in a good place and he wants to move forward, but still. I think it's just a matter of timing on his end.
If there's any.
Actually, can I get another, another question to the staff? Um, so if they were to. Provide or start in six to eight months is just starting that, does that take them off the clock? Then the extent, there's no need to, to come back in front and, and do a extension?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So once we have a, once the planning staff has a complete submittal, say for the preliminary plat, since that would potentially expire next year in two thousand twenty-four, once we receive a completed application, then that clock stops and.
Okay.
So.
And that would actually be a final plat application that would be coming through.
That's correct, yeah, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that would be the logic for that stuff.
Yes.
Yep.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, now go to our public hearing portion and, uh, invite anybody in the audience that come forward, make comment. Uh, invite you to the podium. Not seeing any action out there. Um, CJ, do we have people online?
We have no hands raised.
I guess this is the opportunity to come forward either online or in person to make comment. So if you are online and like to. Add into the conversation, please raise your hand. Not seeing any further. Public hearing is closed. Thank you. Um. If the opportunity has, uh, come out and responds, not much to respond to, but, uh, the option's yours. Mission, questions for staff, further discussion? No, I'm comfortable with the project moving forward. I would like to see it happen rather than sit on the table. I don't look forward to seeing this coming to us again, so I certainly encourage. Uh, some action within the next year moving forward, but I would support the extension. No other comments? I guess we can look for a motion.
I'll make the motion to move to recommend approval of the request of David. Garrettson. For a two-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack Planning Unit Development P U D Master Plan and a one-year extension of the approved Pines at Tamarack Preliminary Plat. For Residential Development on twenty-point-one-six acres on Lot Two, Block One, Day Spring Christian Fellowship. At twenty, at two oh five Sourdough Road in the Pines of Tamarack, uh, P U D Zone District.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? Not, uh, we'll call, vote.
Vice Chair Brown.
Yes.
On this album.
Yes.
George Jones.
Yes.
And Kennedy.
Yes.
Larry Larson.
Yes.
And Chair Hertzfield.
Yes. Thank you. Takes us to our next item of business tonight. Again, a public hearing following the same procedures as outlined before. Uh, it's P U D S P R twenty-twenty-three dash zero-two Champion Express Car Wash P U D Amendment and S P R. CJ, you have a presentation?
We do. Thank you, Chair. As stated, uh, this application is to consider a planned unit development amendment to change the use from eating, drinking place, eat-in and drive-through to also allow for a car wash. On Lot Four of the Walmart Center P U D. The subject property is located at Lot Four Walmart, Woodland Park, Colorado, and is owned P U D. Lot Four is located in the southern end of Woodland Park, west of Highway twenty-four and within the northern portion of the Walmart Plan Unit Development. The subject property is zone plan unit development as seen here on the left-hand side of the slide. On the right-hand side of the slide, you will see the extent of the Walmart P U D. The subject property is located in the northern portion outlined in red. In two thousand and five, the Woodland Park City Council approv- approved a request to rezone this property from agriculture to P U D. In two thousand and seven, city council approved that, approved the final plat, which consisted of six lots and four tracks. The Walmart store has been built on Lot One while lots two through six were to be developed in the future with commercial uses. Within the narrative of the final pla- final development plan, it states lots two through four are for general commercial use. And have been depicted on the final development plan as financial institution with three drive-through windows. Eating, drinking place for eat-in service and eating, drinking place for drive-in and drive-through service. These lots can be interchanged as any of these for comparable uses allowed by the, what, City of Woodland Park Code. The maximum building heights for Lot Two through Four is thirty-five feet. The applicant submitted an application on December twenty-first of two thousand twenty-two, and the planning commission heard this request and recommended approval on February ninth of two thousand twenty-three. The applicant then withdrew their application on March sixteenth of two thousand twenty-three. The applicant submitted an ideal, identical application to the planning commission on May third of two thousand twenty-three. There is no difference from the December application to this current application we are hearing tonight. Due to the fact that the applicant withdrew their application, they must start the, the entire process over again, and the application must be routed back through the planning commission for a recommendation. And the city council for, city council for a final determination. With that being said, this presentation may be a little bit repetitive for some of the planning commission commissioners here, but, uh, for anyone new online and, uh, new planning commission members, this will be new information. The ta- this table comes from the final development plan narrative. As you see here on the slide outlined in red is Lot Four and the dimensional standards it has to meet per the P U D requirements. From this table, the applicant is proposed to change the building use for Lot Four as well as change the parking requirements in accordance with this proposed use. I would also like to point out that within this application, the building height language was omitted, so the building height of thirty-five feet will not change. On the current slide, you will see the proposed site plan, which was also attached within the application. The applicant is proposing an express-style car wash that includes a three-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-nine square foot building that is twenty-point-four feet in height. The applicant is also proposing the entrance and exit to the site from the west side of the property. No new public streets are proposed in the location of the access to the proposed site is consistent with the approved P U D plan. In addition to this requested P U D amendment, as seen on the application, the applicant has also applied for a site plan review of the proposed car wash. The site plan review is a zoning development permit and is reviewed and approved administratively through the city of Woodland Park Planning Department. The planning commission is seeing this item tonight due to the P U D amendment portion. Staff reviews chapter eighteen point three zero in accordance with P U D amendments. These specific provisions include that the purpose of the P U D district is to provide more flexibility. And the application must be heard to the planning commission, which we are doing here tonight. Both of these provisions comply. The uses allowed within this P U D were established at the time P U D was approved. This is a request to change the use from Lot Four, uh, uh, the change of use of Lot Four from eating slash drinking place, eat-in and drive-through to also allow for a car wash. While the applicant has proposed updated narrative, narrative language for the P U D, the table on a previous slide will be needed to update to reflect this change. The development must meet all development standards of this provision, and this may comply as well. Only Lot Four is subject to this request. The dimensional standards proposed for this new, uh, for this new use mean every requirement except for the parking standards. Which the application, the applicant is proposing to meet the city's established parking requirements and city code. The proposed car wash will include twenty-three stacking spaces, ten vacuum stalls and three employee stalls. Off-street parking requirements for residential uses, this is not applicable because, uh, the applicant is not proposing any residential use for this parcel. Off-street parking requirements for non-residential uses, this complies. The applicant is proposing to meet the city's established parking requirements and municipal code section eighteen point three nine point two zero. The proposed car wash will include, as stated, twenty-three stacking spaces, ten vacuum stalls and three employee stalls. Landscaping shall meet the city code and this provision may comply. The applicant included a detailed landscaping plan within the application. Staff included a red line comment within the landscaping plan. This provision may comply if the applicant is consistent with the Woodland Park Municipal Code and the current approved P U D. A detailed compliance check will occur with, uh, an administrative review of the proposed site plan. Staff also reviewed section eighteen point three four of the city code when reviewing this application. That full analysis is within the staff report and is very redundant to the criteria we just reviewed. In accordance with a conditional use permit, the applicant is required to submit a preliminary site plan along with other preliminary documents. As far as the process goes, staff makes comments on the preliminary documents during this process and they get revolved or resolved during the applicant, when the applicant submits for final site plan. Uh, which are essentially construction documents. This process is done administratively through the planning department. This application was referred to the city and outside referral agencies listed here on the slide. The Colorado Department of Transportation submitted a comment on the proposed P U D amendment, which was attached within the planning commission staff report. Within C dot's letter, they did state that no access permit was required at this time. Staff also issued a red line comment packet, which was attached within the planning commission packet as well. Staff's recommendation is to move to recommend approval of the Walmart P U D amendment to change the use from eating slash drinking place. Eat-in and drive-through to also allow a car wash on Lot Four of the Walmart Center and amend the building and parking data subject to the following conditions. One, a final updated site plan resolving all issues identified on the red line plans must be approved by the city before any zoning development permit will be issued. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit for and receive approval of a final site plan for a permitted use, including landscaping, drainage, architectural elevations. And access. Infrastructure zoning development permit. Z D Ps and building permits for all new construction, including all civil construction drawings, final drainage report, final landscaping plan, final site plan. Final floor plans and elevations, final grading sediment erosion control plan with B M Ps. Final utility plan, final photometric plan and. final utility plan, final photometric plan and Colorado storm wa, storm water permit and storm water management plan. Three, and an amended page one of the P U D plan of development must be submitted with an updated building and parking data table to reflect the change in use in parking for Lot Four. Lastly, condition number four, the private access drive labeled on the site plan must be updated for consistency with the recorded subdivision plaque. This concludes my presentation, commissioners, and please let us know if you have any questions.
Thank you, CJ. Commissioners, questions for staff?
CJ, I noticed that Core wasn't involved in the referrals. Was there a reason for that?
Um, honestly, Commissioner, that may have been an oversight on my part just to not list it, list it here on the slide, so I apologize about that. Um, that's an omission for me. We, we typically, um, Core's on our referral agency list and that's, you know, the generated email list that goes out, so they were notified.
They were notified?
Yes, sir.
And just to clarify, these are the same documents that we saw back in February?
Correct, and that applicant representative is here tonight, Tez Hawkins. Uh, he can speak a little bit more to that. Um, but yes, as he relates to me, they are the same exact application that you saw in February as, as being presented tonight.
Are the staff recommendations identical to the previous time? Or have they, have they changed?
I'd say the conditions of approval are the same. Uh, what is a little different is, uh, since we routed it for referral again, we got more comments back. So, um, uh, behind the scenes, the, the, the comments to be resolved with.
The relevant referred to are slightly different.
Yeah, they're, they're more robust, not by a lot, but, but there's definitely more there than the first time through.
As, as you saw in the application packet that you guys received, there is two different packets as far as city red line comments. So, um, that first one was from the first February, uh, they still comply. Or still apply, I apologize, still apply, uh, since it's the same, um, site plan that was submitted and then staff made additional comments.
This is punishment for going, coming back twice, you get a second, second look.
Or hindsight being, uh, we should have just, you know, held this, you know, tabled it for a while and then carried forward to city council as opposed to the, the, the complete withdrawal of the application.
So you're saying it hasn't gone to city council yet?
No, they withdrew it before city council, which is why we had to start over. Um, as opposed to like, no, we want to table this for a while and we'll, we'll come back to you in sixty days and let you know what we want to do. Um, yeah, they chose to withdraw.
Okay.
So.
I have a question on the parking, that's, it confused me. They're asking for twenty-six spaces and twenty-three stacking spaces, ten vacuum stalls, that's thirty, thirty-six spaces and the, this P U D is governed by the standards that were put in place when the P U D was approved. And at that time, the P U D included parking standards, correct?
That table, um, does show parking standards, um, that he had on an earlier slide. He's pulling that up now for you. It's also in your staff report.
So, uh, that's correct. So, uh, in the approved P U D, so required parking spaces were thirty.
Okay.
Um, and with the twenty-three stacking, ten vacuum and three employee stall, or I'm sorry, the onsite, it would be the ten vacuum stalls and three employee. So really onsite, though, there will only be thirteen parking spaces, which is below this thirty. Um, so the may comply portion of the analysis, um, relates directly to this table. So we need an updated table with the updated parking numbers.
Okay.
And what we were looking for in this table is an additional line. Um, and it, and that may be the way this needs to read is Lot Four is, you know, these uses with these metrics and then the, the car wash, um, since it's definitely different than a, a restaurant would have a, a slightly different metric for, um, the parking requirement.
Okay. So in a nutshell, how many spaces are there, are being required, are required?
Uh, what's currently approved is thirty. What the applicant is proposing and, uh, per city code would be, uh, thirteen is what they're proposing for an express style car wash.
And what's required?
Thirteen.
Thirteen is required?
Yeah, in the, or if, if this was not a P U D and you were looking at our parking table, uh, in the code, it would be thirteen.
Okay, thirteen, thirteen. Gotcha. Yeah.
And, uh, just to make one last note, Mr. Larson, about, uh, the parking, um, and with this express style car wash, there will be no, um, inside, you know, bay for the car wash. So it's, you know, express style, you drive up, get your car washed and then park in the vacuum stalls, vacuum your car and leave. That makes sense, so.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else for staff at this point? By the applicant come up and, um, read the presentation or comment?
Uh, we don't have a formal presentation, uh, but we did, uh.
Your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Tez Hawkins, baseline engineering, uh, representing Champion Express Car Wash, uh, seventy building development. Um, and as CJ said, we did withdraw the application just before the city council hearing. Uh, the cost to develop the car wash, uh, started rising very quickly, construction costs. Um, and we do need to make changes to the building, uh, and as we started to make those changes, kind of started pushing the cost as well. Um, and they, they've got a little better, um, and Champion Express decided to reapply and, uh, look for, with application. But I, I can take any more questions if you all have them.
Any questions?
Just to be clear, um, and, and thank you for coming up, just to be clear, the, there is no other use, just a car wash. There's no gas, there's nothing else on this site, on this facility.
No, just, just the car wash.
Okay.
Um, and if the car wash, uh, wasn't to be developed for some reason, uh, it would just stay as a use that could be allowed on Lot Four.
Sure.
And with what Karen's getting, it would be a separate line item, because you can't, it would be either eating or drinking place.
Right.
Car wash, uh, would be your choice, not any other, small time use.
Got it. You have anticipated schedule for this project?
Uh, not currently, um, as far as the original goal was to get construction this summer, uh, we'll see it in the ground, uh, still construction costs went up. Uh, so right now, my assumption is that would be possibly next year, but that's not guaranteed. Um, I don't think it'll be possible to get this thing down, ground and address the site plan comments with staff, uh, before.
Last time this project came forward, there were some concerns about the architectural elevations. Has there been discussion with staff on what the final product might look like?
Uh, not final discussions, uh, once we did start to get into what was required, uh, which was the, uh, more rustic, mountain rustic look. That's when, uh, the brown started coming in as far as the cost. Um, but we haven't had any final discussions and, uh, that's kind of been reworked again since.
The drawings we've received in this application are the same as the original, they have not been modified to reflect some of those concerns.
Not yet, or at least not submitted yet.
And again, this is that part of this discussion tonight, just looking down the road, what might be going on, okay?
Yeah, I, I do recall, you, you had a lot to do with the Stevie when it was first, um, uh, submitted back in two thousand and five, uh, with the original, like, plans, I do recall that. Uh, so I know it means a lot to you to get that changed.
Anything else at this point?
So to that end, I apologize commissioners, um, I would actually like to clearly add that as a condition of approval, um, for a fifth condition, um, to, um, and I can't remember what our wording has normally been, um, where they're going to work with staff to further refine, um, the architecturals to be compliant with the Woodland Park Mountain Western aesthetic. Since we dropped that. Sorry.
As representing the applicant, if you're agreeable to the conditions that have been stated tonight?
We do.
Thank you, Miss Hawkins. Uh, that takes us to the public hearing portion, public comment. Uh, anybody in the audience wishing to come forward and make response or comment, please come forward, state your name.
Dan Taylor. And, uh, Jim, pass out a copy of, outlining what we've prepared for tonight, our comments.
Thank you.
Now, I originally kind of prepared a, uh, presentation for city council uh, back in March, this was going to go to city council, but, uh, I was canceled at the last moment, so. But when the applicant came back, then I dug out the presentation and, uh, here I am tonight. So, uh, let me just start on, mostly read off this and, uh, because I'm not the best public speaker. Uh, our objective here tonight is to supply Woodland Park Planning Commission with overwhelming evidence that will demonstrate without a doubt that the applicant's actual traffic impact and water usage will be about four to five times more than what they have claimed in this application. Once planning commission and the city have accurate information, they will be able to make more informed, uh, decisions about the project, uh, which will reduce future cost liabilities and other unintended consequences to the city. Residents and factors, and by the way, I'm a city resident. On February ninth, and now the applicants claim with two hundred and forty feet cars per day of traffic that comes from, um, that comes from a traffic engineering manual is not representative of this specific type of car washing uh, with this business model in this location. The applicant proposed Champion Express Car Wash in Woodland Park will in fact generate four to five times the amount of traffic and water usage they claim. Uh, since the applicant has stated that they are an expert in this business and built and operated over one hundred similar car washes, they, they do know in detail the actual traffic and water impacts of each of, of their many car washes and also have precise estimates for the proposed, uh, Woodland Park Car Washing's location. Um, the reason, the only trap, uh, traffic data the applicant had provided to this point comes from an engineer handbook and not their own experience is because the lower number works in their favor when applying for entitlement such as this and it is easily defensible to anyone not in. There are two immediate liabilities to the city that, uh, should this entitlement be granted based on inaccurate information. The first is the traffic impact on the residents living next to the site and on the Walmart intersection, which is already at maximum capacity and you know, from the last presentation that, uh, C dot is rated at an F on weekends and, and, um, already in, um, uh, whatever that means, it's, it's ready for something can't handle any more traffic. Let's see. The second, uh, thing we need to consider is whether the sanitary sewer lift station south of Walmart has the capacity to handle the waste that will be generated on a peak day when the recycling equipment for water recycling is not in operation. Both of these should be analyzed from a maximum designs, uh, capacity standpoint, which was not provided by the applicant. Instead, both have been addressed with the same two hundred and forty feet cars per day number that is so general that it is of no use usefulness in this evaluation. The facts in the following presentation will objectively demonstrate in many different ways and from various sources, the actual traffic and water usage will be four to five times more than what the applicant is claiming. In addition, a car wash expert is here tonight with us, uh, to verify the accuracy of this information. Thank you for your service to the community and your due diligence in this matter. And I apologize, the rest of this is rather boring and, uh, it glaze over, I don't blame you. Um, but what I want to do is get this right in your hands and sort of, um, review it and, and refer to it at. Um, first of all, who am I? I'm a Woodland Park resident since, uh, twenty-ten. I'm the owner and operator of the Red Baron Car Wash since, uh, twenty-ten here in Woodland Park. We have three self-service sites, we have one, dual bay touch screen bay automatic facility also in Woodland Park. And we now have one self-serve, uh, car wash in Dubai, uh, so that's by, um, our expert as a manager, Jim Craig, in the audience here, who has come tonight. Uh, Jim has a multi-decade career and experience selling, servicing, installing most leading brand, brands and configurations of car wash equipment and supplies in three states, which would be Colorado, New Mexico, Kansas, uh, mostly as well as others, uh, for leading regional and national car wash servicing and distribution companies. He has extensive experience in design, construction and operation of all varieties of car washes, including many exterior, uh, express tunnels. Mr. Craig has more than enough experience to be considered an expert in the car wash industry. And let's talk about travel. The applicant only references one source traffic data. And it comes from what's called apparently the I T E trip generation manual land use code nine forty-eight. So from what I could find with the Googling, land use code nine forty-eight is defined as automated car washing. The applicant provided no explanation or information as to how accurately land use nine forty-eight of the I T manual uh, actually applies or may not apply to this specific car wash in Woodland Park. It's for automated car wash. The term automated car wash can be used to describe an extremely wide variety of car washes in many different locations and circumstances. The application maintains that the traffic number derived, derived from this manual are true and accurate representation for the size, style, business model and location of this specific post-car washing with the part at this point in time. Application, applicant also maintains these numbers can therefore be used as an accurate basis for all traffic and water use calculations the city and C dot need to perform in order to make informed, critical planning decisions that may have long-term consequences. The data presented below will prove this number is not accurate enough to be used to evaluate this entitlement request. The applicant's twelve twenty-one memo states that the car wash generates, uh, four hundred and eighty-one daily trips, which is one trip in, one trip out, which means two hundred and forty, uh, cars per day on the busiest day of the year. Busy, one of the busiest days of the year probably, uh, thirty-nine car washes washed per hour and busiest hours of the busiest day. That's from the I T E land use for, whatever that means. Uh, the applicant qualifies these numbers as occurring on a Saturday and not in the wintertime, and this is important because it shows that, uh, they have seriously looked at this number and applied it to their business and this project and said, this is the number according to their expert, um, experience. My own experience has always held true is that, uh, the car wash volume on the busiest days is about two to two and a half times the volume of an average day. Some days of zero, of course, uh, and, uh, this also makes this sense statistically, as you have a bell curve, all these to have somewhere less and some that are more. Uh, champions of busiest days are two hundred and forty cars, then the average daily volume would be about one hundred cars. The data and examples shown below, uh, show average, uh, will show average daily volume will be four to five hundred cars per day resulting in volume of one thousand to twelve hundred fifty on busiest days. This is four to five times more than the applicant's claim of two hundred and forty. So my first reference I have, the link there, it's the, uh, twenty twenty-two exterior conveyor survey and that's from carwashmagazine.com/surveys, uh, says for an exterior express, uh, the average they found was a hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred cars per year. If you divide that by three to six days of the year that they're open, you get about four hundred and forty cars per day, not the one hundred the applicant claims. Also says in their average, average revenue per car they found was eleven dollars and sixteen cents. So we'll apply that eleven dollars and sixteen cents to Mr. Car Wash, which is number two minutes. And Mr. Car Wash is rather, uh, unique and interesting because it's a publicly traded company that is exclusively. And Mr. Car Wash is rather uh, unique and interesting because it's a publicly traded company that is exclusively uh, you know, automated express style car wash with an unlimited lock, but that is their business model. It's exactly the same as the applicant's business model. So uh, being a publicly traded company, you publish all sorts of information about their business online for anyone to see. Their annual report last year said they ended the year with four hundred and thirty-six sites. Eight hundred seventy-six million dollars in revenue, which means two million dollars per site. Five, each site is five uh, thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars per day. If we apply the eleven dollars and sixteen cents per car, we get an average uh, volume for Mr. Car Wash is all four hundred and thirty-six sites, uh, four hundred and ninety-eight cars per day. That's an average. Number three. City of Albuquerque. Now I found this news story. It was on one of the local TV stations. Um, where um, they were investigating that the, the city council was alarmed at how many car washes were being built and how many applications being pulled for new car lines. So they were starting to do an investigation as to what's going on. We need to look at our regulations because something's out of control. So during that uh, news story, the news station interviewed uh, Champion Express Regional Trainer Christie Hagerty, who, who said, quote, "On average, with all of our sites, a good five hundred," meaning they do five hundred cars a day, and that matches incidentally with number two, Mr. Car Wash. And it's very close to the survey on the previous page. It said four hundred and forty cars per day. Now later on, when we talk about water use, uh, we're going to analyze some of uh, Canadian car washes, water bills from their own facilities. And that will also support the four hundred, the five hundred cars per day average our volume at their existing facilities in Canadian City and Elmo's. An express tunnel with an unlimited wash um, program business model just simply cannot succeed on a hundred cars per day. Right, I M C under traffic. No data from the applicant's own experience or performance was provided, even though the applicant states that they are an expert in their bill builder. The applicant also provided no industry information such as I just provided to. The applicant's twelve twenty-one traffic memo contained this statement. Quote, "Each car spends about two minutes in the car wash tunnel and subsequently the car wash can process approximately thirty cars per hour." The statement implies that thirty cars per hour will be the car wash's maximum capacity. This is simply not true. First of all. Anyone who's, who's, who's even looked at a conveyorized tunnel car wash on a busy day, you know, right away that more than one car can be in there at any given time. And I, and I doubt that the applicant doesn't know that. All right. Accepted industry standard allows for an average of twenty feet of conveyor per car. In other words, calculations are based on allowing twenty feet per car. That means five cars can be inside the applicant's one hundred foot tunnel during the car wash process at any given time, not one at a time. So there's a company called Sunny's Equipment, the world's largest manufacturer of uh, tunnel car wash equipment. That's all they do. And they're good at. And they put a lot of videos out and self-help stuff. And there's, there's a link I provide here, one sunny's direct dot com slash car wash conveyor speed. They go into detail on saying that the optimal conveyor speed for a one hundred foot tunnel is around one hundred cars per hour. Optimal. Now, mind you, the conveyor speed can be adjusted by the operator to whatever they want, up or down. The proposed one hundred foot, uh, oh, let's see, the one hundred foot tunnel max practical speed is around one hundred and sixty. By that, I mean, uh, they can go up to a hundred sixty cars and still uh, that's where the, the process starts to fall apart. It can't really do the job anymore. Now the proposed one hundred foot tunnel therefore has a maximum capacity and optimal speed of twelve hundred cars per day. Uh, given a twelve-hour working, the applicant has said they would be open for twelve hours. Uh, but could wash as many as nineteen hundred and twenty cars per day at a speed of one sixty for twelve hours. The applicant has said and reinforced in several occasions that their proposed car wash can only wash two hundred and forty cars per day. Planning Commission asked the last time on, on February ninth, one of the commissioners asked the applicant what impact the car wash traffic will have on the residents living adjacent to and just north of the site? Because driving by the site is their only access to their homes. The applicant said he could not answer the question, and there was no further discussion on this issue, even though the question is not answered. Let's talk about C dot for a minute. C dot review of this project. C dot's letter dated February ninth states an access permit is required. And their uh, most recent letter dated June fifteenth in response to baseline engineering forces the applicant's uh, letter to C dot dated five twenty-six removes that the access permit requirement based on the uh, applicant's claim that the car wash traffic counts will be, quote, "Lower than the initial proposed use," which is a quick service restaurant for the P U D. Meaning their, their statement that they're only gonna, uh, their peak car wash traffic is going to be two hundred and forty is a lot lower than the four hundred and eighty-three P car wash traffic or peak traffic of a Q S R. So for that reason, C dot has dropped the requirement for access. Data presented to this point with further, further examples based on water usage yet to come. Show P car wash traffic will actually be one thousand to twelve hundred fifty car per day. This is over two times the peak volume of a Q S R, nonetheless. With the part planning has so far accepted the car, the applicant's traffic account claim as fact and have recommended approval, beauty amendment, even though I've learned them, the discrepancy, which I do not blame with the part planning. Anyone not in the industry, it was very difficult for them, anyone who didn't really know this information. So, um, that's what the applicant has said. But as CJ has said before, this is the reason for having public comment events like this. Approval of this P U D amendment is the last time this project did anything more than administrative review, which we base solely on the applicant's uh, unsubstantiated two hundred and forty cars per day traffic number. Maximum design passive power wash should be considered when evaluating this project in regards to traffic and water consumption. Most car washes will have cars queued all day during their busiest days. And we all know that most car washes in the springtime business days, you know, there's a line all day long. When everyone wants to wash at the same time. On those days, the facility will in fact be running at maximum design asset. Which is at least the positive card. Four hundred could be up to two thousand, now two hundred and one. It's extremely unlikely the applicant would spend, uh, let's see, yeah, that's right. It's extremely unlikely also that the applicant would spend a lot of extra money to build a car that has four to five times the capacity than they actually need. All right, let's get underwater rec- uh, consumption and recycling. It's now a standard practice in car wash business to recycle seventy-five eighty percent of the car wash water in medium diet uh, volume car washes, especially here in the West where water is very important. And it's scarce. Uh, this is not exceptional and should be expected of any new medium too high volume car wash. A standard improvement recycling technology processes will may result in twenty-five to thirty gallons per your vehicle range with regular maintenance. Again, Sunny's equipment reps that I talked to at the car wash show back in February. Um, I already knew this, but you know, they, they confirmed that it's difficult to get less than twenty-five gallons per car, uh, but.
Except for today, you've given me a fair amount of time. I don't mean to cut you short. There's a lot of good information providing to us. This is where we could summarize this and expedite the conclusion.
Let's just do that.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, that's, can I point out that, um, one of, um, utilities, uh, comments asked, asked the applicant to say, what is your maximum water, um, use? What sewer use to basically water, fast, you're gonna use it. And they still use the two hundred and forty car number that, uh, of course, the car washing could do far more than that. So let's go. This important part is that, um, we actually call, uh, back in, uh, March to give water bills from the Champion Express Car Washes in Elmo's and Canadian City. And this is important because they're very similar design. They're similar in, um, demographics as well. Uh, which you can see in these car washes, uh, December, you know, most of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand gallons, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand gallons. You take their stated twenty uh, gallons per car that they're going to use fresh water, sure enough, you come out with uh, an average of about five hundred fifty-nine cars per day, again correlating with all the other data that I've just provided you. It says four to five hundred cars a day is a very reasonable and average. Uh, two or seven, and sure enough, in Canadian City, you get the same result, five hundred and nineteen uh, average cars per day. Now there were some outliers there that we were pretty shocked to see in, uh, ourselves. But in October and the, the Champion Express uh, in Canadian City use two million gallons of water. And then another one point six million gallons in November. And then it starts to go down. And my only conclusion of that is that their water recycling equipment is not working for that amount of time. And, uh, and for whatever reason, they didn't get it fixed. And, uh, they always have a capacity, as I do in mine, to wash strictly with fresh water. And that's the reason why they're requesting an inch and a half or two inch water tap, because they need enough water to be able to continue to wash that capacity with all fresh water. Uh, if they were to wash, just need twenty gallons per car, as I said, one car at a time uh, for two minutes, that's ten gallons a minute. You can get that from a garden hose people. You do not need an inch and a half water tap. So, uh, this is a great example of what, uh, our, our pumping station down south of Walmart used to be able to handle volumes like this. And this is in a ten or twelve hour span with the car washes open. Once this car wash is built, uh, you will not be able to go back to the applicant and say, now you need to pay for upgrading this pumping station or fix traffic things, you know, after the fact. And you guys know that, I know. All right. I can jump to the conclusion to say that, um, I hope you consider all this information, uh, very carefully. I think I'm, uh, like, point, unless there are any questions.
All right, well, I sort of appreciate the information you input on this. Sure, consider. Now we're on here. Uh, any other?
Don't leave yet. Don't leave yet.
All right, and, um, I'd like to offer, if, uh, Jim has an expert here, if you'd like to ask him any questions as well.
Very good.
Yeah, have you had an opportunity to sit down actually with the planning staff and with city utilities to talk about your concerns? What kind of reaction did you get?
Well, I sat down, ran a little math by Kip. And, um, he was in agreement that it's very likely that the pumping station does not have the capacity to, uh, handle a situation of mass capacity with no recycling. And, and, and really, it's what I said before, um, Kip, I am, you know, anyone not in the industry is hard for anyone to know this information. And so, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's just difficult to without somebody who knows what they're talking about in a car wash. To be able to contest.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jim?
Well, uh, public hearing is still open, so if you'd like to come forward and make comments, you're welcome to do so. Would like to try to restrict the time we take.
I apologize, I didn't know there was time limit. My name is Jim Craig. I've been in the car wash industry for over thirty years. Every aspect of it, owned them, built them, sold them, manufactured them, sold the equipment for major manufacturers nationwide. I'm usually on the other side of this. In the past, I've argued to get a car wash bill. It's upsetting that a company with this background would come to a city like Woodland Park and try to get a project like this done, not using thousands. Uh, that's my only concern. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience give the applicant the chance to respond, but first anybody online, CJ, anyone with their hands raised?
We have no hands raised, Chair.
Okay, and we're nearing the conclusion of this time, so if there is any questions online, please raise your hand. Or comments be made. Everybody, any audiences had opportunity to speak so far. Once again, anyone online?
No takers.
Public comment is closed. Uh, that's the applicant's. Mr. Hawkins, come forward if you have any response to what you've heard.
Yeah, and I do have the, uh, app claim online too, but I'll speak before he goes, uh. So I do have a list here as I was taking notes, uh, regarding the I T manual. That's the most widely accepted uh, trip generation manual, uh, in the United States. Uh, I don't know of any other source that uh, any jurisdiction, county, municipality, what it says, uh, and outside of that, uh, he just throw numbers in, this probably they're gonna throw them right back at you about the use of I T numbers of preventing, like, private traffic, but I wasn't familiar with the source that, uh, you mentioned before car washes.
You can go ahead and face us. It's easier to hear.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Use a microphone and face this way.
I wasn't familiar with the, um, source for the other trips, uh, for the trips that, uh, came from the public, public comment. Um, but again, the I T is what we use and is what's widely accepted. Uh, and one of the reasons for that, uh, which was a correct statement, uh, the I T manual does consider a wide variety of car washes. Um, and it does create a conservative estimate for trip generation, uh, to provide in a professional, um, uh, traffic impact study or a trip generation manual, uh, for, uh, proposed development. Um, and again, we did use the Saturday peak numbers for every single day of the week to gen- uh, to generate how many cars uh, would be produced by the car wash. Uh, there are no weekday numbers on the car wash, so all we have is the peak hour for a Saturday, which is the business time, which is the numbers we use. Uh, so the numbers that were provided, in fact, actually hurt this car wash. Um, just because they're the most conservative or highest numbers they could be used. Uh, there is a pass by, uh, uh, pass by rate that is also deducted from that, um, those most conservative numbers, uh, which every land use code that's within the nine hundred land use code that goes from nine hundred, eight hundred, six hundred, two hundred land use codes, every, um, uh, land use within a nine hundred code is entitled to a pass by rate.
Uh, explain what pass by rate is once.
Uh, the trips that are from folks who are essentially passing by and decide to stop, uh, sending to a gas station. If you, I, I gotta give a good example. Let's say you don't have, say, you really don't need to gas to get to your next, next destination, but you have a little time. You might as well, you, you might just stop at the gas station while you might have the time. That's a pass by trip. First, the folks who are, uh, seeking to go to the car wash purpose, they're leaving home, they're going to car wash, they're leaving work to go to the car wash purposely. Those are not pass bys. Those are designated intended trips.
Thank you.
So, yeah, continuing with the traffic numbers, uh, we're kind of jumping into the length of the car wash and how many cars, uh, can are allowed in the car wash. So yeah, continuing with the traffic numbers, we're kind of jumping into the length of the car wash, how many cars are allowed in the car wash? And the numbers that worker provided, again, for a champion express or for car washes of status for a nationwide. Average and Champion Express does have different types of tunnels across the nation. This woodland parks considered a small market or champion express, so they do not extend. Their car wash, the length of the car wash tunnel to its maximum length that they typically typically can go. This is a hundred foot length car wash, this is the smallest they will ever go, they do have lengths up to one twenty five, one fifty and two hundred, which can. Raise those national averages of how many cars and warp usage for each car wash around the nation. But again, this is the smallest. Length car wash that woodland park. I mean, that Champion Express would use, again, woodland park is a small market. And then, as I said earlier, there was a, the application was withdrawn due to costs. And profit yield, woodland parks market might have been too small, how much it was gonna cost. And how much time it's gonna take to yield the necessary profit due to the low, low numbers of vehicles traveling through this area. Compared to their other car washes. And then going back to the number of cars that can. Go through the car wash per hour, that is still up to. One car, two cars in the, in the car wash tunnel due to the length of it. And as was stated earlier, different packages, types of car wash you can get, you can get the. I don't know the names, Alan might correct me here shortly, but there's basic. Standard, basic or deluxe. That just so, there are some cars that are shorter than the others, but two minutes of that average for each car wash. And then the number of cars that can be stacked on site, so there can only be twenty three cars stacked. On site, that includes the cars in the car wash, those are the twenty three seconds basis that CJ mentioned earlier. Anything past that would spill over into the drive aisle, which prevents egress and ingress inside. From the vacuum spots and from the exiting area for the car wash. And then that will just create stalemate and point, I would not allow that to happen. Point outside will also not allow the car wash to back up into the roadway. It's a private access drive of the roadway to access the car wash, so. As far as stacking more cars and bringing more cars in per hour, it it just wouldn't happen with the number of spaces that. Number of space, the second spaces on site. And then lastly, going back to the. Traffic and trip numbers. I have never known a Q S R generated. Four hundred trips. Q S Rs drivers generally generally generate a lot more traffic than a car wash would. This simply think about how many times a day people do, but if I'm on top today, people wash their car. And that is, that's also backed up by the I T traffic manual. And those numbers were accepted by C dot. Who have professional engineers, traffic engineers in-house. And are looking at these numbers very closely. One more on the. When we then proceed on changing their letter and what was required with a new access permit. Their code says that in, for any land use change, if that land use generates twenty percent of more trips. In the originally intended land use, then you need a new access permit, and you also need to do a full on traffic impact study. Then it's not the case with the car wash, it actually. Generates almost twenty percent, actually more than twenty percent or less than the original approved land use, which is the Q S R. So that's, we explained that in our response later, and I believe they took a close look at it and agreed with that opinion from the I T. Agreement our opinion from the numbers that came from the I T manual. That that's all I have. Oh, and Alan is also on it, that's okay, Alan, did you have anything to add? I probably messed up the name of the packages or types of car washes we could get.
Mission may have some questions for you.
Okay.
Questions?
Um, just a couple of things and looking at the numbers that you guys submitted, I was doing just some calculations, so if you have so many minutes per car. And you can put five in there, it just adds five to the number per hour. Doesn't make it times as multiplier, it just adds those five cars. Cause they can go in right away and it's still two minutes per wash or faster. At the. No, that's five cars, that's it. Per hour. For the first hour, and then it's thirty per minute after that, because it's two, if you line them up continuously, it's thirty. It doesn't make it times five. So that's a little misleading, but. It does add the cars at the first. And that's it. Anyway, I was looking in the nearest I could tell at the hundred foot length. At the. Thirty seven seconds per car that you were referencing, that's three miles per hour, it's a walking speed, walking through the car wash. I don't know that most car washes run that fast, it could, I don't nearly know, but. That's within reason that it could happen at three miles per hour, I don't know if you have a spec on what your car wash conveyor speed is.
I do not have that myself, Alan. Would you happen to have that information? Ellie might be.
Is it a continuous moving compared, or is it stopped for the deluxe wash? Because if it's continuous moving, it won't make any difference which wash you pick, it's just whether it sprays it or not.
Commissioners, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, good evening commissioners, Alan Kershaw of Seven B Building Development, I I can't give you exact numbers, I do agree with. The commissioner there that was speaking, those are optimal, right? And there's a lot of variables involved when running a car wash. And so, yes, if you're optimal and you've got highest speeds on the conveyor belt going, then sure, the numbers that they were throwing out. Could possibly do it, when you, when you model for a car wash. We're typically not gonna do a business model on a car wash on its maximum capacity, we're gonna try to figure out what that area is going, going to support. And we're gonna model from there, from a business perspective, so if. I'm, I would love to have it running optimally, but I don't think that's gonna happen, there's so much variables with, with employees, with equipment, with cars lining up. Stacking, you know, pay stations. There's so many variables in a car wash that can keep those numbers down, so the two fifty that we represent. Is a model that, that we look at when we're looking at a car wash in a small market. And that's what we represent in our application.
Okay, thank you, so just another comment, the. Thirty cars per hour with the extra five would be. Eight hours straight to do two hundred and forty cars continuously with no stops, no gaps, add the five cars, if you put five in the thing, it would be. Two hundred and forty five cars in eight hours straight with no gaps, so that's pretty healthy car wash usage for. That, so. If you went to one minute per car, that would double, now that you're into the four, five hundred range that you're talking about, so. That would be the fact that I would want to understand. Your assumption that they're gonna run it faster, his statement that they're gonna run it at two minutes. You know, that's. Yeah, I don't know what they're building or what they built there versus what they're building here. So that, I do know that the water supply line will only supply so much capacity per hour. Gallons per minute type flow, so they won't get an unlimited amount of usage out of what size we put in, they're will size it for a. Particular size, the meter will be somewhat restrictive as well. So. The capacity they're asking for is what the design element should probably be for. That would be up to the building department to ask if they're asking for a larger. Design water service than what their capacity is that they're saying they're gonna use, so I I can't necessarily talk to that, but the water. Review should catch that if there is a mismatch. So anyway, just some comments.
Any other questions for applicants at this point?
Yeah, Mr. Hawkins, is there a consideration of noise? For car washes, has anybody asked you about that before?
Yeah, and sometimes we have got that question, particularly when they were directly adjacent to a residential property. We did have an example of a car wash where the tunnel and the vacuum stalls were. From fifteen, fifteen to twenty feet away from someone's fence line, and probably about thirty feet actually away from the home. When it's that close, when it gets between fifty, under fifty feet, that's when those questions start, and that's when mitigation measures are running. From the jurisdiction or, I know we studied, we conduct, we studies as well.
And. Just to be clear too, can I ask a question of staff, what's the property right adjacent to this? I know there's four lots that are there, right, but.
And you're speaking of the residential use?
Yeah.
So that's Woodland Village Mobile Home Park.
Right, and how close is that?
Well, they, they border property lines.
Okay, it's gotta be close to five hundred and fifty feet, it's just indicated by the applicant is typically calling for mitigation measures. Is that, did I understand correctly?
Feet when it's under fifty feet.
Five zero.
What, what was the number, sorry?
Fifty feet.
That. Are we within fifty feet?
Yeah, most likely.
How is that property line between the. New facility and the residence?
Property, some building from the car wash.
Understand that. Is there a screening area, is there a wall?
The road is.
Is there post construction to mitigate that? Issue.
We're pulling some document or some slides up of to help talk about some of this.
And there's a.
Yeah, this is probably a good one.
Shows a thirty foot easement and a ten foot utility, thirty foot utility easement and ten foot utility easement from. What appears to be the edge of the property construction boundary. And. That's about equivalent with the. Back end of where the parking spots are for the vacuum stalls, so there's another eighteen feet. Typical there. So. It's. Forty eight feet. To the front of the parking where the vacuum stalls are. To the line of construction, that's not to the. Buildings in the mobile home park, which are shown in their rendering here on the drawing. They're considerably farther, another twenty feet or more, if it's to scale.
I'm sorry, this is a running joke with CJ and I, that's like, give me the mouse. So based on what Commissioner Kennedy was just talking about, hopefully you can see the mouse here on the screen, just under the P R and proposed. So the distance that he was first talking about was this thirty foot. Right in here, so there's thirty feet there, and if you draw that line parallel over to the right. Then it talks about twenty feet to the edge of the parking stall. So that gets you to fifty, and then the depth of the parking stall is another eighteen feet. And then it looks like there's a little bit of space into where the building is, so you're at roughly sixty eight feet from that property line. To where the building sits in this particular scenario, now if we go to the slide with the aerial. Oops, we don't have that in there, so we can pull up Google. Real quick and look a little bit more in depth at how the. Where the units are in that mobile home park relative to the property line, now that you know that there's roughly sixty eight feet from that property line to the proposed building. So bear with us here for another minute.
Is there any fence or screening proposed at the property line?
Yeah. Well, there's an existing fence, but we don't propose a new one.
While they're doing that, where, where were the vacuums? Is, I would imagine that's gonna be a pretty noisy element as well. Are they, were they close, were they on that side by the residential property, or were they on the other side?
They're on that side, they're your residential property, and then there is a closure for the vacuum boom, where the pressure is each two. So if you, if you can imagine, there is one main vacuum boom, and then that pressure runs each that you.
Okay, okay.
But that vacuum boom has an enclosure.
In enclosure, but. Are you planning to do noise mitigation with that?
We are not.
Okay.
Based on the distance away from the actual homes and mobile homes, the existing wood fence and the enclosure.
And then the hours of operation?
I believe this one will be. I think, let me check that, I think this is eight to seven.
Okay, so CJ's just shared a screen from the Teller County assessor site, so you can drive this to him. You can highlight the property line of the subject property that's shared there with the Woodland Village Mobile Home Park to the north. So in this picture, you're able to see where those residential units are to the north relative to that property line. And then, as we saw earlier from their proposed site plan, it's another sixty eight feet in the subject property to where the building would be located.
To the, yeah, to the building, but the vacuuming would be done on that side as well. So it's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Eight to seven for the hours.
Eight to seven.
Yeah, which are there, Woodland Parks Code, commercial business hours.
Can somebody operate the vacuums just by driving up and. Paying for them? Like at midnight?
Alan, can you answer that question?
No, I don't know.
Yeah, I, commissioners, yes, I can answer that question, so no, they cannot drive up and use the vax. During off hours, they can't use anything on the site.
Okay.
I would make one last statement on the vacuums, you know, we have provided. Third party studies on the VAC systems, it's, it's information that's available. On those VAC systems on noise. And after twenty five feet. It's no louder than road noise, so you got interstate or highway twenty four right next to there, it's gonna be no louder than the road noise.
So just to. What is the maximum capacity of this installation of cars? Going through the actual wash bay.
As in how many cars can fit in the tunnel?
How many cars can you do a day? For an hour?
Let me reference back to that generation memo.
No, that's not the question. What's the capacity of the equipment? To process cars?
I don't really think I understand the question, the capacity of the equipment, how many, how many cars can the?
You get five miles of cars coming through, how many can you put through your equipment? In an hour and hour? So we're not limited by traffic, but the actual equipment throughput, what is the maximum capacity of your?
Oh, traffic was, the traffic number is one thing, and how many cars you can get through there, no matter if it was, if traffic was maxed out. Yeah, I don't, I don't have that answer.
Well, that's not the, what's living factor in the capacity of the operation?
The stacking, number of cars stacked in the car wash and then.
When more people show up and can stack, where do those cars go?
Away. They, we turned those cars away, they're not, we're not gonna allow those cars to stack in the access drives. And then, at that point, Champion Express would be a public nuisance, and then we have a code enforcement issue on our hands. Right?
Technically, yes, functionally, no. Sunday, these cars are backed up onto highway twenty four. Sunday, these cars are backed up onto Highway twenty four. Or I can into into a Walmart parking lot or something like that. How are you turn your cars away? Close the gate? And shut down for an hour?
You you simply turn the cars away. You can't stack here.
Public road. Okay.
And then to answer the question with the maximum traffic, uh those numbers wouldn't be generated. I I don't see a reason to uh assume that the
I'm just trying to visualize a worst case scenario.
Worst case scenario, and that's what the IT manual is for. It envisions the worst case scenario.
And and then there was some questions regarding recycling and water capacity. And if the recycling system shuts down, does the operation shut down or does it continue using a hundred percent fresh water?
It does continue using a hundred percent fresh water for maintenance to clean out the recycling system.
They don't shut down the the car wash when the recycling system's not working?
We do not.
So the water usage numbers are in fully full operational capacity of the recycling system. And so if that fails, how long does it take to get a service man out there?
Alan, do you have an answer to that question? If you did hear it?
Yeah, I can. If you guys can still hear me, um
Yes.
I can get you all. I can get you all that information. It's system doesn't typically shut down. Um I think the gentlemen that were up there before discussing, looking at numbers and they saw a spike in in numbers. Uh you know, typically, if you do have a system that shuts down on you, you may not know it right away, and then you figure you 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 start to see it like like you see it in the in the in the water you see. And so um we do have separate meters in our in our system that we've implemented, so we can start to see if the system is not correctly working for water consumption, because just like you guys, waters is a very important thing to us. It's it's a cost, right? And so we're trying to monitor it, but we are. We have started to implement other meters that we can see internally in the building to watch the water. Um so the answer is, no, we don't shut it down. Um if we find a problem, then at the end of the day, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna address that problem. But there might be a period of time where that water is is being used. I'm just being honest. It might be a time when the system's not working correctly and and we are using um all fresh water, but it's rare. But that, you know, there is that possibility that things like that happen in a car wash.
And CJ or Karen, was that um? I don't know that you've had the opportunity to bring that to Kip's attention, but is that something that, you know, Kip uh looked at by chance? Instead of assuming a hundred percent recycled water every day of the month, every day of the year?
Yeah, I think um within, and I'm referencing the review comments dated June twenty first of twenty three packet two of two from uh the staff report here. Uh Kip did make comment on the most recent submittal here, um and he was wanting the applicant to provide water usage numbers, including the following. Water usage per car wash with the recycle system working, water usage per car without the recycle system working, number of vehicle wash per day and anticipated water demand per month. Um and he also stated within the same comment, please provide information on anticipated downtime for the recycle system. With this proposed high water usage, we are looking for information on maintenance and response time for the recycle water system. Um so that is information that Kip is looking for from the application.
Is that part of the conditional?
Um so within the conditions of approval, um we kind of have a uh we have a statement on there. Um a final updated site plan resolving all issues identified on the red line plans.
I see.
So that's specifically stating these comments or referencing these comments.
Those references.
And uh CJ, you actually, before we even resubmitted uh and you allowed the application to go through, you asked for those numbers. Um so without the recycling system working, uh ninety five point two five gallons per car uh is the rate.
What was that number again, please?
Ninety five point two five gallons. If the recycling system wasn't working or if it was uh down for maintenance.
I think what CJ just read to us a few minutes ago from from Kip is very important information. And I'd like to see some of the answers to the questions that Kip brought before I would make a decision.
Yeah. I also have a question. You were saying that you turn cars away if you hit the access of the stacking lane. That access road is a two lane road. So how are these cars, they're gonna come in and turn right into the facility? Be told they can't go in. So how are they gonna turn around? Because that, you know, the only way I see is for them to go into the trailer park and turn around in the trailer park, which I'm sure those people don't want happening.
Yeah, I would agree with that as far as um trailer, the folks in the trailer park not wanting both uh wanting cars standing around um at their intersection. Um these cars will likely pull in and turn into a vacuum stall. If the vacuum stalls are completely full, they would likely go into the mobile home park to find a turnaround.
Is there a way to put a exit where they go straight through and on the other side of that piece of land, there is another road. Is there another way to hook on to it to provide a way out? Where in case you have to pull cars through?
We have the site plan up on the screen.
Oh, I have it up here.
Okay, but just
An access road to the mobile home park. There's way north. Well, there's two access roads on either side of that piece of property. The one on the right hand side of this drawing, I believe, isn't that one way to go north into the mobile home park?
It is one way.
Is it? Okay.
Yeah, they would like if car wash is completely on vacuum stalls, there's no room to turn around, look back yourself on. They would likely have to go into the mobile hall park to make that turnaround happen, make that turnaround.
Mr. Kershaw had his hand up a minute ago, but he's since taken it down. I don't know if he would still like to say, but at the chair's pleasure.
Yeah, so I would like to, if I could, I'd like to address that question on access on that other side. So that is C dot. So right past our boundary line there, that's all C dot um property. And C dot will not allow access, a second access point to that locate to that road from this site.
Thank you.
And I would also ask, oh, excuse me, uh also ask the question, uh there are several fast food restaurants up the street here. There are this and the residential areas um which have a higher trip generation memo or trip generation uh cars um. And if those are not stacking, if there's no history of those stacking, there is. There is.
There is, but on all the quick service restaurants here in town, there's other ways around them. If you get into the line, you can get out of their lot without causing a backup onto the roads.
Right.
So you you can go around is what you're saying?
Right.
Correct.
There there are ways to bypass the key lines in those spots on yours. You you developed something that there's no bypass to it. Here, if you're gonna turn them away at the entrance, they're they're either gonna have to come through your property and turn around some way, or they're gonna have to go into the trailer park.
That's correct.
Unless you widen the road and make it somehow usable to pull a U-turn there, and I don't see that.
And I would say if the trip generation numbers warranted that, that's what would likely need to happen. Uh but unfortunately, the trip generation would not warrant that. I mean, I definitely understand you all looking at the worst case scenario for every possible situation here currently or so that that completely makes sense. Um I'm saying.
You have a discussion for the applicant?
Uh do they plan to sell a monthly rate plan for car washes or just pay as you go through the through the wash?
Alan, can you help me answer that question?
Uh answer would be both. So monthly wash, membership.
Okay.
We want to Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. I'm concerned about the relationship between this facility and residential mobile home park. Uh what is the zoning on the mobile home park currently?
Uh that parcel is on commercial.
Is it which one?
Um can let me double check here. Um and let's see here. So that is um service commercial. Uh C um
Existing non-conforming.
That's exactly right. Yep.
It's still residential use. And there's an existing fence on the mobile home property?
Correct, yeah. I can. Yeah, I can pull up the aerial. Yeah.
The hours of operation ceasing at seven o'clock, so it's
Again, again, this
Lights at night is not a major concern then.
And again, this is the Teller County Assessor's map. Here in the green, you'll see the property lines. Uh you know, this is just an aerial with the property lines overlaid. So you know, for reference, they're just not a hundred percent correct. Um but you can see that where my mouse is here, the dark green line where right here. Uh there is a wood fence currently existing on the site.
Pretty reasonable condition? Or is that a?
It's a good point, though.
Any other questions or discussion?
We we talk about at the very beginning of the staff report, we talk about that. We requested to allow a car wash in addition to the existing proposed restaurant. To me, it doesn't seem like there's enough room for both those.
Well, um to also allow is the verbiage on there, so it's either one of the one or the other.
Okay.
Um so if if construction commences on the site and a car wash is built, then in order to put a fast food restaurant, they'd have to, you know, do a demo and then build a fast food.
They want it worded so that if they don't build the car wash, they could still go back and build a restaurant.
Good.
Okay. Kind of answers my question too. This could be what we
Are we into general discussion now? We close the comments. Um so the um two minutes for wash and a hundred feet is a half or point six miles per hour and they thirty seven seconds or, you know, fourth times that or whatever um is three miles per hour, which is walking speed, walking through a car wash. So most car washes I've been in, which I've had a few built on my projects as well, um are a little slower than the three mile per hour walking speed. That's pretty high capacity, pretty fast. Uh again, the market probably wouldn't bear that here anyway. Um so um the two minutes for wash to me is on average, probably accurate. I don't necessarily uh think that it could be one minute, twice that many, but that would be um uh five hundred cars at one minute per wash uh would be straight, no stop for eight hours straight. No brakes, no gaps.
Is that to Ken's question about max capacity?
Well, no, I I still don't know the max speed that the conveyor can run and how what the capacity of the equipment is. We haven't heard that. Uh if we knew the model number and the vendor that they were buying the equipment from, we could research it through the vendor, or they could just provide it to us. That's I'm sure they have a spec. Any conveyor I've ever put in has a feet per minute, capacity per hour, whatever. It'll be rated um with what their capacity is, and they can run it slow or run it fast. Um I do agree, most of them are on DFD of some sort, so not a big deal, but um that's a lot of cars uh to hit their numbers that they're saying. I don't necessarily see that happening in any other car washes, but they don't have the monthly plan, which would presumably increase usage. Um so um it's it's out there, but from a technical standpoint, again, the water meter, the size of the line is gonna cap the capacity of the operation should. Um so and the size of the drain lines and everything that coming out. If they push more water out than they're sized for, it would back up at some point, uh especially if it's downstream. So um there would be some physical limitations to them being able to go as high as the numbers I heard tonight from our citizens. The citizens' concerns, though, should be checked out. That's my uh thoughts on that.
Those are reflected by Kip's questions?
Uh somewhat. Yeah, I think Kip's looking at it and in line with what their concerns are as well, from what I heard CJ say. He's looking at, you know, what's the max? And especially if the recycling system's out, and do we have capacities through all the downstream devices for drains and upstream supplies for water to meet those demands. So um but I think that it's uh a little overestimated, the worst case scenario that was presented by the citizens from my engineering background to reach those high numbers of twelve hundred a day um just from a volume, capacity, the size of the market, but it it might happen, but I can't imagine that it would.
If it was gonna happen, there'd be more people trying to put car washes in Woodland Park.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Car washes are coming too. It's I don't I don't think a rule here is to restrict car washes.
Yeah.
Um a lot of the questions are highly technically presented here without without time for review. And I don't think we're really in a position to well assess these things. The city, the city staff has some capability to do that, and that'd be further than what's done now, for instance. It it may be that with further consideration, a utilities department would say that something shouldn't run without recycling system going. I I don't I don't know what the conditions are. Be important. But I know that I'm not smart.
The way some municipalities do it, they say this is how much you pay for this many gallons. After that, when it goes up, this is the surcharges that come on.
I know I'm not in the position to figure out what what these what these requirements should be.
Yeah.
Citizen comments, you know, to raise a point that there are there are technical questions to be answered. In fact, they raised the questions. Doesn't mean that they're right. Another car wash shouldn't be allowed in the city. Um if someone wish it, it's general, it's the type of use which seems appropriate in this area, the service commercial. Good question raised. Our point made by Don was that the idea of since if the stacking isn't sufficient, it's gonna generate traffic that's it's unfortunate for the mobile home park, but the number of stacking spaces they had sounds to me to be sensibly large number that very rarely, if ever, is the business.
I know we have other businesses in town that are similarly set up uh with drive-throughs for every restaurant, the other car wash, and I've never seen them stacked out into the street.
I haven't seen McDonald's with it stacked out to the highway too.
I think what they mean by turn away is when all the stack positions are full, there's no place for you to pull in. You just drive on by and go somewhere, come back later.
Well, it sounded like they were actually gonna have an employee out there turning them away, but
I think it's still like Physical capacity of the of the site.
Yeah.
You can't turn into Walmart because the parking lot's completely full. You 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 gotta go down the street and go somewhere else.
What I what I would like to see is if you know, maybe getting back to Kip, so he's alerted to some of the issues raised and such, but that the city staff has considered some, considered the points raised as if suggestions are necessary, if the conditions are necessary, those are identified when it comes before the city council and not have one sort of a And not have one sort of, the information is dumped like a thud in front of people, and the city council's supposed to then figure it out for the first time. So. Thanks. Make some of the comments, the citizen comments made, raised. A number of, probably touched on the largest points you're going to be an issue, if those are identified. And a city staff position made. Based upon that information. And further reflection. I I I think that's. The city council would expect that.
Can we not, can we not table until we get that information?
It's really not necessarily our purview, it's like. Technically, it works.
I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess technically it could be, we say, we don't understand enough, we need more additional information, we're going to table it for a month, or something, we get that, but. That's not really the way things work here in practice, too, it's.
But is the site suitable for car wash and?
It's a real question. When CDOTS reviewed the numbers.
Yep.
And. I assume they have a lot more technical knowledge than I certainly have. Probably the rest of the council. Commission has, so we somewhat have to defer to them that's control of their intersection that, so. I'm concerned about the stacking distance, but the total traffic volume. Has been reviewed at a certain level, city engineers review those numbers as well.
That's correct.
Well, and it's beyond my expertise.
I have a hard time imagining a car wash is going to create more traffic than that Starbucks does.
Yeah, exactly.
Not that there's not a lot of traffic there.
I I I just would say, though, I I do have concerns about noise, especially with, I I know that it's zoned SC. But you have people there, and I have concerns about cars going through the the mobile home lot. And concerns about water. I I I'm not sure if if conditionally you want to bring that to city council. Okay, it it seems like. There's, there's, this isn't a fully baked cake.
The wa- water one is sort of a generic question, I mean. Subject to, I suppose, some question pumping capacity because it's downhill from used water. But. Anywhere in the city, a car wash is going to generate similar condition concerning about water usage. And if our director of utilities. Is comfortable with it.
No, I think he's got a lot of questions.
Yes, he does have a lot.
Well, I say, if he, if he, if he is comfortable with it, he's got questions, he's. To have his agreement to move forward. You know, whether it's not tonight, but in the future. His concerns need to be addressed. And if there is more capacity needed in the pump station, he should be able to identify that, that would be another condition placed on this project. If that was needed, I would think.
Can we, sorry to do this to you guys, can we restate the conditions that you had in the motion?
Maybe add a conditional number five as well.
Related to architectural. Aesthetic.
So this is a condition number one, commissioners.
That's the one you're talking about, George.
And this was the one we pointed out previously with within the final site plan portion.
Correct.
Of the project and all red lines will be identified.
The red lines include Kip's concerns.
That's correct. Yeah. Yeah, and there's, you know, some also a lot of other comments from Kip just regarding technical. Things, sizes on mains and, you know, eight inch versus six, you know, things like that, but so that's condition number one. Condition number two.
Yep, okay.
And three and four.
Private access travel.
Final utility plan is in his list.
Yeah. That, okay, so number four doesn't necessarily address Don's concern. I don't believe it does, number four specifically just labeling.
Yeah.
On the site plan.
That's. Service lane is the road to the southwest.
Correct.
Just a quick question, the landscaping on the. Along the. Side of the. Project that's going to be facing the mobile home park. I'm looking at it right now. What kind of landscaping is that going to be? Is it shrubs, bushes, trees, something that'll help block some of the sound in the side or? Landscaping doesn't do much for mitigation of sound.
And and so when we went through those, sorry, that was one thing I was looking for, there's no noise condition. At this point. At this point, you're correct.
And that would be based on the zoning, you know, in that, in that area that, since it's all commercial zones.
Even though it's a mobile home park, it's.
Yeah.
Yep. If it were zone residential, would there be other restrictions on noise and separation?
We'd be looking at more stout buffering between the the commercial and the residential use in that scenario.
Oh. But existing nonconforming residential, we're not protecting those existing uses as if they were residential. I think we should. Be looking at similar restrictions. Noting that future development would be something else, but the current development is residential. Just because it's existing nonconforming, I don't think we should be discounting.
The fact.
Quality of life.
That people are there, they're living there, yeah.
Well, I'd like to see something more robust than that. Separation when it's fencing a wall.
Right.
Karen, could you restate? I I didn't understand what you said about if it were residential, what what requirements would be after the whole thing?
And I'm doing this from memory, which is not so. Good, partly because I'm I'm still new, I don't have the code completely appropriated into my DNA at this point. That I believe our buffering provisions that we do have in place in our regulations. They're considerably more robust, you know, when you do have a commercial use next to a residential. Zone, I think is technically what our our regs say.
I think a lot of our setbacks, and there's a significant setback already.
Well, it it. The, give me a minute.
I will say, commissioners, within our other commercial zone districts, you know, I want to be very specific, this, the subject property is own PUD. So this provision I'm about to read does not apply to the specific parcel, but in other commercial zone districts, as far as landscaping goes. And that buffer twenty five percent of the lot shall be landscaped with one half. The requirement abutting the residentially zoned areas. So that's one way the city has provisions in the codes to kind of mitigate that commercial versus residential usage. As you may remember, last meeting with the facility off of Highway sixty seven, we had. A lot of conversations regarding that provision, so.
I guess one thing to keep in mind is that this is already zoned for drive-through restaurants. With cars lined up and whatever. So. You should not forget residents, but we're also concerned in differential impact. Compared to what's already authorized. If if any. I think they're asking for an amendment, since we're hoping so, the whole PUD. A review in my mind. So making changes, we need, we can look at the entire PUD package. You know, a restaurant that's there will be open till ten or eleven at night.
Later than the car wash.
We also have a fuel station on one lot right on the same corner for traffic, that's a lot more than a car wash.
And those would be twenty.
On the same corner.
Very often.
What fuels are very often twenty four seven. Yeah, a lot more hours, too. So. These are already approved uses, and so I I personally still do not have an issue. With the use of this particular lot being a car wash. And I haven't seen anything here tonight change my mind.
The use, I guess I'm agreeable to that, just that. We do are allowed to put conditions on the amendment. And so looking at some of the particulars. When appropriate, so I'm not opposed to the car wash.
Yeah.
But there are some impacts we'd like, I'd like to mitigate. Positions all the way to do that. Find anything, Karen?
I'm getting there. Because there's all these little. Gravel holes.
The kind of, the kind of provision CJ read are reasonable to look at, this is a discretionary decision to modify the usage. What if? In areas where it's even not discretionary, what sort of. Requirements are there as to setbacks, landscaping? Other sorts of things? Are there some that fit or appropriate here? Doesn't sound like noise, it's probably one, there's some distance there.
I don't know, there's, there's vacuum, it's right on that side. And they're not, as Mr. Hawkins stated, they're not. Right now, noise suppressed.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a enclosure with the vacuum systems in it. On that side.
But they're not doing any noise.
And there are considerable amount of plantings on that side around the parking lot.
That's aesthetic.
Yeah, I understand.
So what I did find actually does relate to PUDs. And under PUD final plans. That there is. A whole long list, so when we get to number thirteen, says in addition to the above. Specifically, planned business development proposals shall include the following. And that's a whole other list. One of the items there, though, is description, location, and extent of fences, earthburns, and or buffer areas. So it doesn't say ones required, but it should be provided in anything that is turned in, if that's what they're proposing. In terms of finding what you all are looking for, that's. Probably not going to happen on the fly here tonight, I apologize.
Yes, do you think you could go up to the microphone, just so we have a record of that, I appreciate it.
Want anything, want record? I did make a mistake.
Mr. Hawkins, correct.
Yeah, this is as Hawkins, baseline engineering, the mistake was in my earlier comment that the enclosure was not noise mitigated. And it is, it's surrounded by C and U block in some other areas where it suggests the special, it wouldn't be C and U, just be a word enclosure, but this one is the C and U. Block enclosure, okay.
Thank you for clarification.
I guess my primary concern still is the water. I I I live with the the traffic council, I think they're finding it somewhat reasonable for for that. But I'm very concerned about when I heard comments from city utilities. I I too. Like George says a few minutes ago, would like to see some of those answers to some of those questions about why. Why I could make a. Logical decision on car worship the site that I. So I I I would ask that we. Ask that city utilities reviews the information that Paul gave us today from Mr. Taylor. And also to. Work with the applicant and the planning department to resolve some of the issues that he has prior to us making a recommendation on a car wash.
It seems to me they. The city staff recommendation already addressed that in the area, has pointed to. The question, the question seemed to go. Are, is a new car wash acceptable in Woodland Park? And. Because wherever the amount of usage is going to be three similar questions wherever it is. And I don't, I don't feel there's been. The fact that there's remaining questions which need to be addressed, and we have a condition that says they need to be addressed. I think that's sufficient to reflect the fact that, you know. Could be concerns about a car wash, the the staff will identify those concerns. And address them, and I'm. I don't feel that I I can or should, I didn't say to keep, not that I can, but I don't feel that I should be trying to saying, we can't build a car wash in the city because. Because of water concerns. If that, if it turns out that those are concerns there. The director of utilities is going to have to tell me that.
That's what, that's what I'm looking for. But that's, that should be their job, I think, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, city engineers.
Well, the first condition dresses that concern since it's in the red lines.
Yeah.
And Kip would have to come to conclusion, and again, I think it's. As Lee mentioned, it's probably beyond the scope, least of my comfort in making that decision, converting those numbers. So. I'm. Easily comfortable with the traffic based on CDOTS review and concern. And the water issued, you're looking. I think additional information that the public works with. City utilities can review that to make determinations if it's acceptable or if additional. Conditions need to be included. Isn't going back and forth on separation between the residential and the commercial.
I I I found it.
You did.
There's actually a provision is eighteen point four two point zero seven zero, this falls under or. Under fencing, I believe is the section that is in it, but it says there shall be a solid fence buffer. With a height of seventy two inches for all commercial and industrial lots, which have a lot line which abuts a residential lot. Which is where we stalled out at staff because what's next door is not a residential lot, it's a service commercially zoned.
It's a lot used as a residence.
For me, it's residential use that's in place, so that's, that's where we stalled out. You all, as part of a conditional use permit, can certainly say what you were talking about earlier with regard to the quality of life, and. While it may not be zoned residential, the fact that that use is there. You know, you you would like to see a fence. The other piece of this. Is I, I understand that, you know, in those comments that we brought you. Kip was asking for more water information that was not provided and talked about before this got to you. So if you really wanted to see that resolved a little bit more. An option there would be to continue the public hearing and ask that to be resolved, or at least maybe, maybe. Answered to Kip's satisfaction. You know, as before you guys actually made a firm recommendation. And if you were chose to do that, you would be continuing this to a date certain. So there's, there's options, or you may be comfortable enough tonight by adding additional conditions and making a recommendation, so you do have options.
Could you mean the reference again?
Eighteen point four two point zero seven zero.
And I also have a Google map, the street view pulled up if. You guys would. Like to share that as well, so I can pull this up, so Karen referenced the seventy two inch fence, which I'm no math major, but.
This doesn't look seventy two inches.
Well, that's, well, that's a six foot fence.
Yeah, but it doesn't look seventy two.
So, but that's, that's what's currently existing on the site.
Is that, is that a sound? I was going to say, is that a?
Uh, under our definition of an open fence means eighty percent open, so that is not eighty percent open, I can make that determination from here. So that would be considered, well, not an open fence under our standards.
Well, looking at that photo, that's very telling, too, we have a drainage way to go through there. Pretty ugly. And. You know, that that certainly could be used part of the. You know, that that certainly could be used part of that offer. And if we're still concerned about. The impact. Of noise. To the mobile home park. I think it would be prudent to require a a screening sound wall along their fence or whatever. On. The opposite side of that drainage. I assume yet the plans don't call for that to be modified.
Larry, would we require a. Require that for. A ra- a drive-through restaurant?
Yes, I mean, I I think that's a rhetorical question, because the answer is no, a drive-through restaurant would not.
No, we we were talking about the vacuums, that type of thing.
Well, we're assuming there's some noise there, we haven't heard it and it's enclosed, so. Yeah. You know, for sure.
In a quick service restaurant, if it has a drive-through, it's gonna have a speaker that's gonna be going. Later into the night than that vacuums.
Yeah. Now, I think we're, I think, I mean, we've already discussed. Mr. Hawkins came up and said that it's now. Noise suppressed, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fairly comfortable with it. Always issues from the vacuums. The fence does not extend from property line to property line. I think. An extension of the fence. Should be. Required. Separate before. Uh, residential from commercial aspects. I'd like to see a condition. Basically. That section that was according to us.
Again, not so much noise, but just fizzled.
Separation.
Separation.
Would you have children or something without playing in the yard?
You would, you should have a decent fence.
Yeah.
So. As far as the continuing or. Moving forward tonight, I'd like to move forward tonight. I think staff. Uh, Kip and his department can make reasonable determinations on that, so I'm. I don't think that having the information. For me to review is gonna make much of a difference. Gets recommendation whether it comes before this commission or is included in. What goes forward to council, I I think. Just moving forward with his recommendations to council should be adequate. Uh, so I'm comfortable moving forward that. That addresses the. The water issue. Uh, the traffic, I'm I'm. Can defer to see that and their review and expertise. And I just the the separation between residential and commercial, I'd like to see that in place. Uh, I'm not sure how to address the stacking issue. But I'd like to move forward tonight. Basically, with the conditions staffs presented with an additional. Requirement based on that. That's a requirement.
So that, that's five with the mountain, the mountain. That's aesthetic.
Yeah.
And six would be offensive, the same.
Right.
Of the same type as would be required for eighteen point forty-two oh seventy applied.
All right, we get public comments. Close at this point. Any other thoughts, comments?
I don't have any issue with your proposed plan, I think it's sound. Or what we can decide tonight. What we can do with the information, and I do agree that Kip and the engineers need to decide on. The maximum water capacity, the capability of the infrastructure and so forth. And I'm not concerned that reducing the. Or changing the use to this is going to create. It's actually gonna make better traffic than the current use. So, I'm not concerned about the traffic.
I'm not going to vote for. Uh, approval of this project tonight. I'd rather see it continued. I'd rather see it continue because of the water issue that we talked about. And I I believe that needs to be addressed first before we could recommend a car wash. At this site, I think. I think a car wash is a very intensive use of water, even though. Today's technology recycles a lot of that same water. I I still think is a big concern, I heard those concerns when I heard the comments from city utilities. I'd rather have them address those issues, have the information they need before them. Before we make a decision.
You had a comment?
We'd like to entertain a. Motion of some type, either to continue or to approve. Karen, can you live with a reference to item six, as I described it, sort of cross referencing eighteen forty-two oh seventy, as if it were applicable? Cause there they talk about the height of the fence and there's a solid fence plan and such too. Does that work for you?
Yes.
That's the case. I'm moved that we recommend approval request by seven B building and development represented by basements engineering on behalf of common property management. For a P and D amendment to change the use from eating drinking place, eating and a drive-through. Also allow a car wash and lot for Walmart center and amend building and parking data. This. This um applica- this approval would be subject to the four conditions identified in the presentation by the city staff to us. An additional fifth condition requiring that the building plans. Um, conform to city staff satisfaction with the mountain western. Uh, aesthetics required in Woodland Park. And a new sixth condition requiring that be fencing provided. Uh, character um substantially the same as would be required under section eighteen point forty-two point oh seven oh, if it. Applied to this parcel. And the adjacent parcel, the adjacent parcel.
I'll second.
Any other comment? We'll take a vote.
Uh, Don Tezelen?
Yes.
George Jones?
No.
Ken Kennedy?
Yes.
Larry Larson?
No.
Uh, Chairman Hertzfield?
Yes.
And Lee Brown?
Yes.
Six two, um, four two. Motion passes.
Thank you, uh, Texas reports, Karen, to hear reports from the mission.
Uh, the only thing I wanted to follow up on this evening relates to um. The short-term rental ordinance that uh you all held a hearing on on uh June twenty-ninth. City council did do first reading of that ordinance, and at that time, they opted to set the public hearing for October fifth. Twenty twenty-three. So uh we got a couple months here before it'll be in front of them for public hearing, uh, but that that is the date that they wanted to go with. Not that I can think of.
Anything for the permission?
Um, I I did see that the the city manager resigned.
Oh, yes, I assumed everybody is like in the loop, yeah, yeah, Michael Lawson, um. Michael Clarkson um has submitted his resignation and his last day with the city of Woodland Park uh is August fourth. Um, I don't have any other firm information on transitions and what's gonna happen with that. I expect um city council's already um. Thinking about that and um at their meeting next week, I imagine there'll be some some discussion at that point. But don't hold me to it.
Karen, do we have a meeting? Sa- second meeting in July?
Yes, we will be back to doing a, the plan is to be back to doing another work session on our code review.
Okay.
And what are we doing?
Not a hundred percent sure, because there's some. Uh, things that we have talked about circling back to, one of them uh really is kind of ways to structure. Uh, that chapter that talks about all the different zone districts and 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 items there, and then there's also. Uh, potentially diving into some of the other uh use standards now that we've gone. Um, through the definitions, uh, so there's, there's a couple of things in play and I. I've been, uh, I have not had a chance to have a a meeting with our consultant Jen and kind of put together a better plan. Um, since we're not giving you a lot of lead time, we'll try to make it something that doesn't require a lot of homework from you all.
Yeah, if if you could, Brad. Since it just sort of tell me what we're to do, if you do it before. A week from tomorrow, tell us, I mean, the earlier you can tell us what's the subject is, it's easier to go back and review it, because.
Right.
It's been a long time since I've been.
Yeah, we've had a a few other detours in between too, so um. Yes, I I. I hear what you were saying loud and clear.
You know, it's not the formal notice, just in in email saying, you you think the following will be in the bucket for us.
Pop quiz will be on the following, right? Oh, I will do my best.
Or maybe just a nice summer award event or what?
Um, I will do my best. Yeah.
It's eight fifty-one, meetings adjourned.